Lord, I thank you for the wonderful opportunities that you have given this city. We thank you for the possibility of SpaceX and other economic opportunities. Lord, I ask you to lead and guide them, lead and guide each of our leaders here. Lord, let the outcome of this meeting here today be to the benefit of the people of Brownsville and for your glory. Lord, I ask you to lead and guide each one of them today with your discernment, with your direction, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. So, since there was no executive session, I guess there's no action needed to be taken?
Correct.
Okay. Next, we have the mayor's report, and since he's not here, do you want to move on? Any commissions?
I just have a few words. This morning, I met with a group of individuals, with Dr. Gallin. Also, the mayor accepted, a couple of weeks ago, he accepted a challenge. It's called the Healthy Community Challenge, and it's mainly sponsored by HEB, although it does have a lot of sponsors. And this is a challenge where we take on another city of a comparable size population-wise, and we start logging all our healthy activities, community activities, and there are certain points we get for the different activities we do, and we log in. What we're getting ready to do is, first of all, get the mayor and the commission involved. We're going to get schools, the public schools, and also the university, businesses, agencies, and community organizations, and, most importantly, the individuals, which are you. So, I urge everyone to please log onto HEBCommunityChallenge.com and create your own profile. It takes about two minutes to do, and every day you can just put in an entry, this statement, "I ate an apple today," or "I jogged a mile," and all of that counts toward our success in this challenge. Now, we don't get a monetary prize, but I think the real prize, or the real benefit is in our health, and it creates awareness, because you start counting your calories, you start paying attention to how much exercise you do. So, that's where we really win. And, like I said, just log into that website, and we'll keep you posted on the progress of the challenge. We're going to get a little bit more organized, and then come back to you. But you can go ahead and get started if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you, John, Commissioner Vidal. Next, we have our presentation for Employee of the Month.
Mayor Protem, members of the commission, please help me welcome our Employee of the Month for September, Alberto Guzmán. And, of course, Alberto is known to all of you, because he's always with us when we are having to record or do some features for our channel. He has been with the city since 2006. In 2009, he was given the task of being the city web author, has done very well in that. And if you see a lot of the designs and artwork throughout the library, whether it's for our new Public Computer Center, or the other facilities that we have recently taken or purchased, or working from, the Quedo Building, for example, he is a big asset in helping us with that. So, we compliment him and thank him for all the work he's done. He's also very thorough in helping teach a lot of the new employees that we have into the system, and also with the patrons that visit the library. He's very helpful with them learning the computer system and our technology. So, as Employee of the Month for September, he is, of course, eligible for the Employee of the Year at our banquet in December. For now, he'll get a pin, a watch, of course, he's always on time for all the events, and that'll just be to decorate your wrist, and the plaque for the Employee of the Month for September. Alberto Guzmán, thank you. All you do.
I don't know what to say, other than thank you very much. I mean, all I can say is, I do what I do because I enjoy what I do, and, you know, always with a goal of doing a good job. So, I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. He's the one that did our portraits, and yes, he's very good at Photoshop, because mine looks great. So, next, we have the consent.
Item four, consent agenda items, items A through E to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commission is approved.
Boards and Commissions, number five, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint two members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Committee.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, as you can see, we have our Parks Board consisting of seven members. We have two that would like to be reappointed, that is Leo Rosales and Mehdi Hagyi, and like to, I'd request that they be reappointed, perfect attendance, always working on something. We just recently appointed two new board members, and that is Jerry Hatley and Anissa Gonzalez. We like to keep a mix of former or previous board members and new board members, because there's always new issues coming up, and they pretty much educate each other. So, that's my recommendation.
I had a question on this. The attendance on this one, who is attending and who is not attending?
Everybody there attends. The only one is number three, Mr. Hoskins. The board, if we can have our next meeting, because we've had a problem getting quorums, the next board, they wanted to address that issue. So, that's where it stands at this point. So, right now, if we can get these two, I can have pretty much a quorum all the time.
Okay. So, what does the E and F mean under attendance?
I didn't read that.
Excellent.
Excellent and fair.
On the bottom, and that's the key.
Oh, there it is.
They're all pretty, it's Mehdi Hagyi. It's fair, because the last couple of times, we had issues about being appointed.
Okay.
This has been going on since, like, February, that we've been trying to get this. The two recent ones helped really, they're excellent.
Yeah, I see it now.
I want to reappoint Leo Rosales.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, they're reappointed. Thank you.
Well, that was for Leo Rosales.
Okay.
And you're saying on the Mehdi Hagyi, because I see that there's an F, and then the other one that you're saying that you're having problems with attendance is Hoskins?
Yes.
And so, you are going to be asking us to address that, or you're going to address it in?
No, Commissioner, our board, our Parks Board will address it at the next meeting, because we haven't been able to have a quorum to hold the meetings, but the last time we had spoken was about the attendance problem with one of the commissioners, or the board's board members. So, if we can have a quorum, then they're going to address that. The last, Mehdi's had a, well, it says an F for fair. I think it was because of the last meeting we had, it was just one meeting that she missed.
I guess my concern is, if you're going to be addressing it with Hoskins, and how many absences does each have?
You need to change the key.
I think hers is one or two, his is probably eight. I'm not for sure on that one.
Well, there's a policy for boards. I mean, if it becomes an issue, you can always come back and reappoint someone else.
Right, we just haven't had a commission meeting, or a board meeting, because we haven't had a quorum, because of the lack of, the two, number one and two, excuse me, number one and four, Mr. Hatley and Ms. Gonzalez, just recently were able to attend, and we actually had our first quorum in a while. So, those were one of the issues that were brought up.
So, with the two new appointments, you have a quorum. I just want to make sure that if they're in attendance, and the attendance records that you're providing to us reflect their attendance at the meetings. My concern is that if you hadn't had a quorum, you hadn't brought it before us.
We had four. We asked for Ms. Hagyi and Mr. Rosales since probably February, March, it was tabled, it was continuing to be tabled, and by that time, two other ones came open, and that's where Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Hatley came in, and was able to have us a quorum. We only had four present. Had they not have been put on the commission or the board, we still wouldn't have had a quorum until recently. We just had four. That was all that was eligible.
Okay, so what is the policy, if in the future you don't get a quorum? You're just going to continue to do business without a board?
We can't. Well, the board is just more of a-
Or you bring it before us? That's my worry, that it wasn't brought before the commission, and you were obviously not having a quorum.
Because the issue about appointing people had kept getting tabled by the commission. So, we couldn't have a quorum until it was off, until it got approved. We just recently got a rash of applicants.
It's an advisory board, it doesn't, the Parks Department continues to function even if they don't meet. Not that it's not important, it is, but with respect to business that wasn't conducted, I don't believe that was true.
I don't have any-
My question, Chris, is that if there is a question about attendance, that scale makes it look as if Mr. Hoskins and Ms. Hagyi are on the same page, and you're saying they're not, that Ms. Hagyi attends more often, so you should change your scale.
And that's, that form I don't have, so I don't know if that was part of the packet that was given to you. I don't have that in my packet. No, I didn't have that.
Chris, is Mehdi the young lady that works a lot on Montevia?
Yes. And others, not just the Montevia Park, but the Trails. And again, the one, I have the forms here, and it just said it's eligible for reappointment.
Will I move to reappoint Ms. Hagyi?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
You have your question.
And I will definitely address this issue with Commissioner Hoskins' headset.
And report back to her, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Public hearings, number six, second public hearing to discuss the 2012 Ad Valorem tax rate fiscal year 2013 of .721129 per $100 valuation, which is 4.57 percent of the effective rate of .689621 per $100 valuation.
Honorable Mayor Protem, members of the City Commission, this is our second public hearing regarding the tax rates for the coming budget year, which is 2013. And this is something that we have covered previously, but again, it's a second public hearing, so we're going to cover it again. If the city adopts the effective tax rate of 689621, the proposed 2013 general fund budget would have a shortfall of 281,000. Because we have made some changes, that I will discuss later, this deficit number will now be 455387. If the city maintains the current tax rate of 70 cents, the proposed 2013 general fund budget would be balanced with a 261,468. However, we have made some changes since our last meeting, and those excess funds have been reduced to 87,890. If the city adopts the rollback rate of 72 cents, the general fund budget will have excess funds of 1,274,185, but because we have made some changes, that surplus or that excess have been reduced to 1,10617. Again, this is if we adopt the, or the City Commission adopts the rollback rate. There were some changes since our last meeting, and this are the changes that would, we would maintain the same, the 689621 or the effective tax rate, that means that our deficit would be 455,387. We have made some changes from the last meeting that we had with you. We had two positions that were transferred to the Fund 44 from the general fund, so that gave the general fund extra $53,033. We are changing the, because we're including an additional expenditure that was not there before, that's property rentals for the East Madison of 30,000 annually. There's also an administrative tech one, 28,973 for the animal control. And then there's also customer service specialist for the Office of Emergency Management of 34,760. So, there are some changes of 93,733. So, now, if we approve the effective rate, we'll have a deficit of 26281809. Later, we went ahead and actually, these are all changes, we put in the Assistant City Manager, funding for that, also a position for the City Commission and the mayor, liaison officer, 40,000. So, that means that with this additional expenses, that deficit, now in the, we would approve-
Tony. Pete. What is a mayor city commission liaison?
That's, I guess, a position that the mayor had requested to assist him with some of the city business.
Okay. I don't know if anybody's spoken to the mayor about it. I actually hadn't, and that's fairly new, and that's budgeted?
That's included in the budget now. Now, remember, we do have another public hearing on the budget when it gets finalized, which is September the 17th. These are some of the changes that have occurred since the budget was filed at the City Secretary's Office.
I have another question. The one for the Assistant City Manager, Assistant City Manager, that's an additional position?
That's right. The answer is yes. All of these are additions from the previous budget that was filed with the City Secretary's Office.
I believe there has been, that's not actually a new position, if I'm not mistaken.
It had not been funded before.
It wasn't funded, but it was there.
It's an organizational chart, but it has not been filled in. So thus, since it's been there, we have not filled it in the last few years, so.
In other words, the funds were frozen, never appropriated.
That position has been discussed in meetings.
Yeah, no, I know about that one, but I was-
Well, this is something that the money had not been appropriated, now the money is appropriated. The position was there before, but no funding was placed.
Charlie, I hate to go back to the same thing, but I thought that you and your staff are liaisons. If the commission needs to be advised about something, I've been under the assumption that it's always been you and your staff.
It's more, well, you can answer, Charlie.
Well, we were asked, we were asked to do a study on this. We've been talking to many municipalities that do have this. The idea is to have someone close that has more time to meet with the commission, possibly for projects and things like that, being able to find financial resources for any and all projects you may have, and just work with you, and then they would return to us, so we can have time to sit down and address many of the, number one, assure that the commission is informed of many of the issues that are occurring here, and make sure that you all know about these things, but also to work on projects and things like that. The possibility of them, multitude of responsibilities, such as preparing detailed paperwork for you all, speeches, anything that might come up, we'll be able to address that promptly.
Does this person answer to you or to the commission?
Well, they'll be working with the mayor and the commission, but eventually they'll respond to me, yes.
They'll be placed in the organizational chart?
Yes.
Where would they be based out of? Is that at the Quedo Building, or is that here?
Well, that's yet to come, as far as the availability of office space and things like that, but-
Okay, I'll speak to the mayor about it, but I definitely think that this is something that, in my opinion, should come up to the City Commission for a vote, if there's going to be a liaison to the commission. I think that the commission should have a voice.
Well, in essence, the budget is presented to you, and you eventually approve it, so, but we want to make sure that you understand the things we're working on.
I guess I just hadn't, I hadn't seen this before, so I just, I'm sorry, I had been out because of my illness, but I just, that's something, I don't know. I'll bring it up with the mayor.
I would suggest we, you bring it up with the commission as well. I mean, talk to everyone, so we are all on the same page. Thanks.
If we go with the, we maintain the same tax rate that we currently have, which is 70 cents, then our, I guess, excess funds, because of the changes that we've done, will move from 302,168 to 87,890. If the City Commission adopts the same tax rate that we currently have, if the City Commission adopts the rollback rate, then the excess funds would go from 1,314,695 to 1,10617. Again, we always look at reserves, what does it do to our reserves? If we maintain the effective rate of 689621, the unassigned fund balance reserve would be 8.71. With the 70 cents, it's 9.3. With the 72, it's 10.4. Our policy has a percentage of 15. So, we are below, based on these estimates, we are below what the policy that was approved by the commission last year, which was 15 percent. This, again, this is something that was covered last time. If we maintain, or if the City Commission adopts the effective rate, then there is a decrease from the current rate of 1.57 percent. These are the various rates that we've had the last 10 years. Again, this is something I just covered, what, if we maintain a, if the City Commission approves the effective rate, then we'll have a deficit of 455387. If the City Commission adopts the, in other words, the proposed rate that we have right now, which is the 70 cents, maintaining the same rate that we have from the prior year, obviously, the increase to the tax rate is zero, but an increase between the effective rate and the proposed rate is an increase of 1.59 percent. Again, these are the amounts that we would have at the end of the year, if we maintain a 70 cents of 87,890. If, and this is something, by the way, that we will be publicizing in the newspaper in the next week or so, that we will have a public hearing on the 17th, and we're going with a maximum amount of 4.57 percent. So, the City Commission has a decision to make between now and September 17th, when the tax rate gets adopted and the budget gets adopted on the 17th. At that time, we'll, you will decide as to what tax rate you will be adopting, either the 68, the 70, or the 72. So, the publication will be based on this 4.57 percent increase, which is 2.93 percent above the current rate of 70 cents, 613. Again, the fund balance would be 1 million excess, 1,10617, if we adopt the rollback rate. These are some of the, based on how much more an increase we would have, it would go above the effective rate. If we go above the effective rate, we maintain the same rate as the prior year, it's a 1.59 percent, and it goes all the way up to the rollback rate of 4.57 percent. It's based on 50 cent increments. This is how much we'll generate, based on the percentages of the tax rates, all the way from the beginning with the effective rate, all the way to the rollback rate. Same thing here, this is, what's left on the other schedule is the levy that's frozen for those over 65, if you maintain a homestead. Because of the law that, ordinance that was passed 2007 by the City Commission, if we adopt the effective tax rate, that means that the city would lose, and it's already in place, so it's 504,527, because the freeze is already in place, and this is how much money the city will not get because of the freeze for those over 65, because their property taxes remain frozen since '07, unless that property had improvements added to the structure. If we adopt the current rate, then we lose, we lose, we are like 559,313. Again, these are tax levies that are frozen for those over 65. And, of course, if we adopt a higher tax rate or the rollback rate, then that levy lost because of the freeze is 661570. This schedule shows you, if we adopt certain tax rates, the taxable value of a residence last year was 81,050. This year, it's 82,415. So, if we adopt the tax rate at a penny above, you'll pay 824. If you go to the, the current rate, it's 906. If you adopt two pennies, it's 1649, and then the other three, 2472. And the highest, if the rollback rate is adopted, the highest tax rate, annual tax rate, that on the average, which is 82,415, that would be the average residential homestead, it would be paying 2597 a year more. The rest is, this is more or less what the budget has overall, and we include all the funds, excluding transfers. These are all the budget for revenues of 126,967 million, 126,062,729 for the expenditures. Again, the proposed 2013 budget includes a 3 percent cost of living adjustment for all police and fire department collective bargaining employees, does not include COLA for civilian employees, and again, which I discussed earlier about the 2007 freeze on homestats for those people over 65. The Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts has requested an additional 75,000. If it is granted, it will be charged to the general fund. Right now, we don't have this additional request included in our general fund budget. One of the questions came up last week, how much money have we actually gone and reduced? We have reduced line out of expenditures by 290,202 from various departments. One of the areas that we need to look at very closely, obviously, is the utility usage, and the, because that has an impact on our cash transfer. If we are able to keep an eye on our utility usage, maintain a low utility usage, that means that it adds to more cash transfer from the PUB, based on the formula. Right now, for 2013, assuming that we have the same, we maintain the same utility usage, we will receive approximately 7,35,000 in cash, and the other ones will be utility usage. Remember, we must remember that the lower, the more that we reduce in utility usage, the more we get in cash transfers from the PUB.
Is there anything that we have set up, or that we're looking into, to start equipping, start, yeah, our buildings and whatnot?
Yeah, we've done, we've done some work at the Plaza Building, and we've seen some tremendous savings because of the grid energy that went into that building. We're also looking at this building also, and we have seen some reductions in our utility usage. Right now, we're looking at the zoo, and the PUB is looking at it. Apparently, there was, and they're looking into it, very investigating, because there was an increase, quite a bit of increase, in the water and wastewater usage, but we're looking at it right now. Hopefully, we can find out what the problem is. But that's area that we certainly look every month. We bring a report to you every quarter when we present the financial reports to you, so that's something we look at very closely.
We had an auditor also, right, looking at the electrical usage?
Right, right.
Is there a plan that we have, that we're doing, so that we can look into other buildings mimicking what we did at the Levy Building for the-
Yes, we have a plan. We're in preparation to do it. Narrative form, because we are working on various projects that we have received via the grants, for example, the Grants Department, streetlights, for example, and we've gotten to more modernized streetlights, things like that. It's difficult to identify the exact savings on streetlights, because we have so many, but we're trying to get all that together for you all. So, what Pete's mentioning is some of the projects that we've done, City Plaza and here, modernizing air condition, more efficient air conditioning systems and things like that throughout the city. So, we do- So we do, we do, we do, we do anticipate a, a big savings in that area, but we're working with the utilities and our grants department to, to, uh, for, uh, form that report out for you as we near the end of the year.
Because I think it's important to have that plan laid out, that way we can know where we're spending and?
Right, right. The grant identifies to us what area, what specific locations we can work at. So we do know where to work at and what parts, where to address the efficiencies. So, you know, and we continue to, we continue to find other areas to improve. So we have the plan because we know exactly what the grant is detailing we work at. So we'll, 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 we'll address all that in a narrative for you, so you can see how the difference is in, from last year to this.
I think it's important that we look into that and start, you know, showing the public what is working, what's not working, the types of different energies and whatnot that we're using, because P U B is not always the answer, and I think we need to start, as a city, going into that and exploring that and showing the city that, you know, because we do kind of set the standard and the bar, and I think that's something that we should start looking into.
We actually asked for that a little over a year ago, and I believe that's what Charlie's talking about. They did begin that.
Just making sure that we're going through that.
Going back to the Plaza Building, that building used to cost us around a hundred and twenty thousand in utilities every year. We're below a hundred thousand, we're close to a hundred, but a lot less than what we had before. So that was a huge decrease in the utility bill. One of the areas, obviously, that we monitor regularly on a, really on a monthly basis is our sales tax. Sales tax is very important to us, because it is the number-one revenue source in the general fund. And we're, right now, we're about two point, two point, two point nine-three percent. So if you look at, as an academic indicator, as far as how we're doing, sales tax is a big economic indicator. So two point nine-three percent is better, but it's not as good as we used to have when we were, we're, we're at double digits at one time. So, so again, sales tax, we look at it on a, on a monthly basis. The area, other area that we, we are hoping that will continue is the traffic at the Veterans Bridge. We've seen some increases in, in commercial traffic, and we are hoping that that number will continue to be strong, and, because we depend on those revenues from, from our Veterans Bridge. We, we're, our budget, if you look at our budget, we have a budget for one million, seven hundred thousand, so for next year, we're hoping to see that, that number, hopefully it will reach that number. I bring this up because these are some of the key revenue sources besides property tax. Again, this is something that we already covered before, just to repeat on the fund The, again, very important that we maintain a nice reserve. We will, we will be issuing debt the following year, fiscal year, and that's one of the things that, that we're going to be looking at very closely, when we, when we issue debt, make sure that we have enough funding to pay for that, for that debt. This is just, one of the areas that we look at also is what percentage personnel is in the general fund. Last year, we had, meaning this current year, 2012, seventy-one point five percent. We look at next year, we're at seventy-three percent. Most cities' general fund show around the same percentage that we're showing right now, about seventy-three, in the seventy percent range. So we're, we're within normal. Again, because we are a service-oriented, that's, that's our services personnel. Again, last year, we had a fund, stronger fund balance than what we anticipate coming for the new year. Last year, we had a twelve point four-seven percent of unres- reserve on the unassigned fund balance. Again, it'd be nice if we can hit the, the fifteen percent. Last year, we decreased our unassigned fund balance by eight hundred and eighty thousand, seventeenth, that's between 2010 and 2011. We are going to see another decrease in 2012. We don't know the numbers yet, but we will get these numbers to you probably in early November, when, when our books are, are closed. Another area, we, something we covered last week, last week, is also unexpected costs that come to us, and mainly the hurricanes in 2008. We, we saw increases of two million, six thirty-three, eight oh-seven. We don't get reimbursed for all our expenses, we only got reimbursed one million, four twenty-two. We do expect to receive, hopefully soon, an additional two hundred and fourteen thousand, four twenty-nine fifty. Now, this is a twenty-zero-eight storm, and we're finally finalizing some of our reimbursements from, 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 from the government. Hopefully, we can get two hundred and fourteen thousand that was not previously approved. Again, very important for us to maintain a, a strong reserves in our fund balance. The Convention and Tourism Fund, we are maintaining the same allocations for all the outside agencies. Nothing has changed. Our fund balance at the end of September, 2013, estimated a hundred and forty-one thousand, eighty-eight. Again, all of these agencies will maintain the same funding that they received in 2012. Community Development is a grant, a grant or a fund that's already been approved. Non-bonded debt, eleven thousand, six sixty-three. Debt Service, three million, five thirty-one, nine thirty-five. Also, because we had maintained a nice fund balance in Debt Service, and Debt Service is the fund that we charge to pay all our bond payments, interest payments, and we were able to reduce for 2013 the Debt Service tax rate by two cents, and when we reduce, when we reduce the, the tax rate that is going to Debt Service, well, that goes to the general fund, and that, that obviously helps, helps the general fund. But we have maintained a nice fund balance. What's coming up, and this is something that we've already agreed to, or the city commission has agreed to, is the West Rail relocation, two million dollars. There's C O's that will, will come to you in the near future that you can approve. We've already gone through the West Rail relocation project, which is two million. There's a local share for the Texas Safe Shelter at the main library, three million. These are all local contributions. The airport hangar, one million, one hundred, and, and of course, the recent purchase downtown of two point three million, the building. So without including any money for streets here, the amount is eight point four million that we will be issuing in the near future. The landfill tipping fee, the fund balance is five thirty-eight, eight eighty-nine. Airport, the airport obviously gets subsidized by the general fund for any shortfalls that, that it occurs, and the majority of the transfer, one million, thirty-two thousand, eight seventy-five, is related to the fire operations at the airport. That's where the majority of the cost is, and that's the reason why the general fund transferred money to the, to the airport. Then we have the bridge fund, we're hoping that we can get a million, seven fifty, our share next year. The motor vehicle parking system, balanced barely, barely. The operating fund at the transit system, there's a net loss of four million, one forty-four. The federal government, the Federal Transportation Administration picks up fifty percent, two million, seventy-two thousand. And then the rest is made up of various other sources, and to, that includes the state operating fund of, a grant of five hundred and seventeen thousand, three oh-three, and then there's a general fund transfer of eight seven, eight sixty-four, eight eighty-four. And then there's other lease, lease revenues that are included here, advertising, et cetera, et cetera, that make up the, the rest for the two million, seventy-two thousand, thirty-nine that the city must generate to cover the, the operations of the transit system. Obviously, when we look at, this are new positions, there's more needs, obviously, than resources in every year, two million, six sixty-nine, five ninety-five, that's not funded, that was requested. Capital adlay, a huge amount, fifteen million, five eighteen, two ninety-nine, again, all requests, but now no funding. Special projects, same thing. This is a, a public hearing. This is, concludes my presentation, so I guess we can open it up.
Thanks. Is there anybody that has anything, any public comment?
Roberto Resting. Yeah, Mr. Gonzalez, was there any money saved from last year's budget? What, did you save any money from last year's budget?
Remember what I said earlier, that we will not know until November of this year to tell you more or less how much money is being saved or how much money we overspent.
Okay. So if, if you do save some money, would that go to the general fund?
Any money that is not spent, yes, it stays in the general fund.
Okay. As, as far, the question I am concerned about the Assistant City Manager's one hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, how is he being paid right now?
Right now, that position is approved in the budget for 2012, but he doesn't have any funding. This one hundred and thirty-three thousand includes all the benefits. It's a total cost.
Okay, but is it an increase or a decrease on this, this position?
Okay, the position was approved last year for the 2012 budget, but there was no funding placed in it, no appropriations was made. This year, 2013, as we move forward to 2013, money has been appropriated.
Okay, so how is he getting paid? That's my question.
There is no person.
No person there? It's, okay, that's, that's going to be another assistant, there'll be how many people, assistant city managers? There'll be three?
Okay, three. That's what I'll need to know.
I'd like to ask the Pro Tem and the city commissioners to, on issuing new debt, you have to, I think the three million dollars for the new shelter needs to be not put up at all, not by the library, no way. I think we're already going to new balance in which there's problems in the other cities that are going into those shelters, they're having problems, okay? And I think the costs are way too much. I think something is wrong here in Brazos, we pay too much. If you want to make money, I don't know why, we, the city doesn't invest some of this three million dollars into making electricity by wind power. The city needs to go into a system in which they can make money, not lose money, and that's what's going on. Some of the projects that you want to help, yeah, they're great, but I think you need to cut down those costs now. Now, we are paying, my property went down, the value went down, three hundred and sixty dollars, okay? I went down there to talk to those people, because they didn't send me a letter, and they told me my property devalued, three hundred and sixty dollars, so I'm going to save two dollars and twenty cents, okay? The current tax rate is seventy cents, yes. As far as I'm concerned, let's keep it that way. I know that we can cut corners, and I heard you, Mayor Pro Tem, saying something about going through every building, cutting down electricity use, cutting down everything. This building itself, so much electricity, and it's yet vacant. I look at it, it's vacant, there's not, this room is not used at all. Look at this amount of space in here, my whole house can fit in here, two of my houses can fit in here, you know? So I, I, I look at the waste that's going on, and if you'd like to know, I only spent a hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty cents on utility, and I paid it today. I do cut down everything at my house, okay? So I'm asking you, keep at the rate, it's hard on everybody, it's getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me say a few words. My name is Mr. Barrera, Dagoberto Barrera. I'm not too sharp on statistics, and of course, Mr. Gonzalez gave us a lot of statistics. In fact, I was going to get a doctorate degree, but statistics is not my field, and I couldn't pass it. Anyway, my problem is, don't raise taxes. We're up to our necks in taxes. We pay so many taxes all over the place, and we're right now on a very recession, a recession, and we can't afford, you got to learn to live within your means. You know, it's, it's, it's tough to live right now. Not for me, because I'm real tight. I save my money, I don't live beyond my means. And I save my money when the rainy day comes, and the rainy day is already here. So please, don't raise our taxes. I can't figure out what Mr. Gonzalez put up in the, in the screen over there, because math-wise, I'm not very sharp at that. So please, don't raise taxes, whatever it is, stay within your means, and cut as much as you can, see if we can make it for next year. If not, we're going to have troubles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera. I assure you, Pete is very tight with the money to us. Thank you. Okay, so no more public comment?
Do we continue to the next meeting?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, okay.
Number seven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thousand and twelve dash nine three-three double N to amend the civil service classification plan.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, commissioners, we're here before reluctantly asking that we eliminate the rank of fire marshal of the Code of Ordinances, and to authorize as an assignment the job functions of fire marshal. Basically, it's eliminating the fire marshal position from the civil service code and allowing us to have another officer to do those job functions.
Do you have to?
Currently, currently, let me give you a little history. Currently, the position of fire marshal is standalone. We have offered three tests for that position. The first time we offered it, we offered to assistant chiefs, which is next in ranking them, nobody signed up. We offered it one more rank down, which is to the captains with two years or less, nobody, three people signed up of it, and only one person showed up for the test. We need two at least under civil service rules to take it. We offered a third time, and nobody signed up for it. So we're having a problem with people signing up for it. We've asked the civil service director to post it out again according to the same criteria that we have currently. I don't, I personally don't feel it right to lower three ranks down, so that's the reason why we brought this to your, to your attention, and see if you could help us out with this, with this particular item. And I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Go ahead. So what are you, you're recommending that we remove?
The rank.
The fire marshal position?
Yeah.
Does that somehow affect our community? I mean, we need a fire marshal, does that affect safety?
No, ma'am, it would not affect your community or the safety wise. Currently, I'm doing the, the position, I'm doing the job function of fire marshal, I am a certified fire inspector. So anything that the individuals get stuck with, I may be able to answer for them, or we, we research it together. All I'm asking is to be at least the captain's position. I took a poll around the cities here in the valley, all the positions are three ranks down, which is equivalent to our assistant chiefs, to be honest with you. I, I would entertain at least that position, if nothing else, be okay with us.
Do you have to eliminate the fire marshal position instead of just creating the other position?
If I create another position, I would have two open positions, I would have the test for both positions. We would have to eliminate one to create the other one, basically.
Are other cities letting the tenants test?
The other cities are, they're all, at least the captains are above when they take the fire marshal examination.
No captains?
No, sir, not that I know of. It could be, but I didn't do that far down of research. What I did is how they stand ranked-wise, and most of them are below, at least what is equivalent to our assistant chiefs.
Chief, I don't, I don't speak on behalf of the whole commission. My opinion is that you as a chief, get together with the union, get together with the city manager, come back, study if there are any cities that are allowing the tenants to test. I don't think that this should have to fall on this body, I think that this is something that can be resolved through city manager, through yourself, and the union. I don't think that this body should be the one to decide in an open session or in any session whether, whether we eliminate or to create any other position.
But to be honest, sir, the power is yours.
But to be honest, sir, the power is yours according to the Texas legislators. You're the only one that can say yes or no to it. Civil Service, I have no say-so on this. So, and Mr. Saucy can verify this for me. You are the governing body. The governing body is the only one that can say yes or no to it.
So Chief, just to clarify in my mind, that you do have a Fire Marshal, and you're serving as the second one?
No. I don't have a Fire Marshal. He retired in January.
Okay, so you are serving as a Fire Marshal.
So I'm taking those duties for now till I can find somebody to take, at least take the test.
Okay.
We have not lowered it down to, there'll be three ranks down, and I don't feel comfortable doing it, and that's just a peripheral preference.
You said that one person did show up for the test?
Yes, sir. He did.
Did they pass?
He didn't take it. You need at least two, according to the rules.
Oh, okay.
Has this been advertised?
It cannot be advertised, it's within the department itself.
Oh, it has to be within the department?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselors, anything that you recommend? I mean, do we even have authority to do that?
I think this body has the legal authority to decide, to make a decision regarding the classification, okay? However, at the same time, if there's other options...
Could you lower your mic?
Okay, I think this body has the legal authority to make a decision as to classification, and that's, he's correct there. However, if there's other options which might be better explored before coming back to this body, that may also be the case.
I would feel more comfortable if we get a little bit more background on it, and if Legal can get on it also with you, so that you can provide us a better idea of what the different options are, so that we can make an informed decision at that time.
Let me clarify. I think what the Fire Chief is trying to say is that there's no interest in the Fire Marshal's examination right now due to the retirement of Mr. Nunez, who served for many, many, many years, by the way. And he feels that he doesn't, he's not comfortable going lower than the captain's rank, so he wants to, he wants to give an examine, he wants to give an examination for an Assistant Chief or Captain, and then make one of them the Fire Marshal. So number one, we don't want to eliminate, and we should never eliminate the Fire Marshal's responsibilities. But I agree with you that we need to brainstorm this a little bit longer.
I think that's what this was doing, asking us to eliminate the Fire Marshal position.
Eliminate the Fire Marshals, give an examination for an Assistant, for the Assistant Chiefs, for an Assistant position, or a Captain's position, and then make one of them the Fire Marshal. That's what he's saying.
I don't think we need to eliminate if you're asking us to, because you're asking us to eliminate, and then you're going to move somebody up to the Fire Marshal position. I think you need to look at this with Legal and then give us a little bit more background.
We'll do that. We'll look at it. You're right, Commissioner.
It's an open...
Just to clarify something, what the difference is, the Fire Marshal position that is right now in the ordinance, it's a standalone. I cannot assign it to anybody. It has to be taken through Civil Service examination. If we remove it and put an officer there, just an officer position, any officer, whatever rank you all decide, we would test for that rank, and then I would place that job function to that individual, as we do for our training officer, as we do for some of the other officers that we have. It's just making it easier for the chief to decide how to do it. It's very similar to what PD does for their job assignments for their lieutenants. One is in traffic, one is in CID, one is internal affairs. It's basically giving me the same courtesy to be able to do that.
Well, I would like to make a motion to table this item so that they can get a little bit more time to provide that background information.
Before we make the motion to table, we have people, it's a public hearing, and I think there's people that want to speak on it on behalf of the Fire Department.
Mayor Pro Tem, Honorable Commissioners, Marco Longoria, Brownsville Fire Fighters What the chief is bringing up to you is something that, you know, something that we don't really, we don't want to say we don't accept, we don't want. I think what the main thing here is doing it properly and doing it legally, okay? First of all, the chief says that he, on a personal issue, on a personal thinking of his own, he doesn't like the lower ranks to apply for that position. Well, I'd like to have it kept that way on a personal issue. That's his own personal opinion. But there is plenty of lieutenants on the lower ranks that are willing to take that test, and we have experienced personnel in the Lieutenant's Division which have been under the Fire Marshal's office, and they are willing to test, okay? That position is basically a position that requires a specialized kind of training, and we do agree with the chief in that sense that, yes, we need to have a strong officer in there, and yes, the lieutenants will do an excellent job just like anybody else. That's just a personal issue that he has that will not bring it down to a lower. He has asked the Assistant Chiefs and the captains to take it, and he has very few people sign up for the test. But there is a lower ranks that want to do that. He also mentioned that you have the authority to do so. Yes, you do, and Mr. Mark Saucy also agreed with him. But this also lies on the Civil Service Commission, because Civil Service laws specifically says that they will approve the classified positions, and of course, this is done by ordinance also, which you guys would have to do then, okay? And I guess I agree with you all. I think there's a little bit more of a study and more to bring forward before we even move into that. So I'd ask the Honorable Commission to, yes, table that at least. Thank you. Any questions?
No. Anything else? Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Motion to close, public hearing.
Chief, I'm just going to ask if you can give that research form and find out if anybody else is doing, is using lieutenants? That research form, thank you.
If I may comment, it's not just about if anybody else is doing this, what the law allows, okay?
I think I would get together with Legal and come up with what the different options are and the different scenarios, so that we can get a better idea of what the overall picture and what we're legally allowed to do and how to proceed.
Definitely. Thank you.
Motion to close, public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Action items. Consideration and action on Resolution Number 2012-053 to accept grant number three dash forty-eight dash zero zero three one dash zero four zero dash two zero one two from the Federal Aviation Administration for the Airport Improvement Program at the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport in the amount of seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars nine hundred and seventy-six.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Tetro, and members of the City Commission. Our purpose for coming before you this evening is to request the City Commission consider and act on the resolution that was just read by the City Secretary. What the resolution does, it documents to the FAA that the City Commission supports and accepts this grant for improvements at the airport. The use of the grant funds will be as indicated, and I believe you have a copy of this in your packet, as well as the detailed descriptions of the projects. The first couple of projects that you highlight up there, largely administrative nature, had to do with federal regulations regarding DBE requirements and so on and so forth. The next project, you see the small picture of, has to do with the engineering work for a project that we anticipate having, in fact, have a fund reservation for in March to rebuild accommodation of Taxway Bravo as well as the West Ramp. Taxway Bravo is the primary air carrier taxway that goes from the primary runway up in front of the terminal. And this is also a ramp project in front of the Hunt Pan Am, Hunt Pan Am facilities are in the process of being, you know, redone, and they've done an excellent job on. This does the asphalt work on the air cargo side. In addition, there is another project which is the funding for Phase Two, looking at the terminal. As you're probably aware and so forth, because of the increase in airline service that we've been able to obtain at the airport, we're pushing the capacity of the terminal substantially in terms of the number of people, all the way down to such things as the availability of bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera. What this does is provides the funding necessary to do a potential, well, to do the analysis necessary for potential expansion of the terminal, so that we can accommodate the increased needs that we already have, plus some that we anticipate having in the future. So in summary, that's what these projects are designed to do. The ramp project is particularly important because in, we already have a fund reservation with the FAA for this for about nine million dollars to redo that ramp as well as Taxway Bravo. And again, the increased use of the ramp as well as the Taxway is, it's important that we do things like this so that we maintain our ability to handle that traffic movement on the ramps, okay? I also have Manuel Alcacer, the Chairman of the Airport Advisory Board, here with me. Will be happy to address any questions.
With all those in order, Mr. Brown, I would defer.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Larry, I want to congratulate you. Well, I attended Hunt Pan Am's Customer Appreciation Dinner, and they said they have very good working relations with you, and I really appreciate that because not only are they bringing more sales into our airport, but also more employment. They doubled their number of employees and their relatively well-paying technical jobs. So appreciate that. Thank you.
I will also note to you both themselves, as well as the Southwest Aviation FDO, are doing particularly well. We've had about eight two hundred new trees and increase in GA traffic within the past couple of years, and that is why they are able to expand, create additional employment. It shows you that the airport that we have in this community is definitely an employment sector for the community, and we look forward to more of that.
Thanks, Larry.
Item ten, consideration and action to authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Metro and South Texas Independent School District to use B Metro facilities in Brownsville, Texas.
Mayor, members of the Commission, Normak or her staff cannot be here at this time. They're stuck at the office. But this is basically an agreement just to have a co-op agreement with the neighboring cities to assist in the transportation and cooperative efforts with other neighboring cities, in this case, the Independent School District, South Texas Independent School District.
Charlie, is, when we do, on the MOU, are these services provided for free, or the entities are built?
They just follow the same basic fees that anybody else would. It's just basically, they'll assist us in some things, we'll assist them. But I apologize, Normak cannot be here to give more detail. If you're uncomfortable, we can table, she give you more specifics or...
So are the staff, is our city staff going to be used to coordinate the use of the facilities? Are they coming into the facilities without our staff being present?
Our staff and their staff will work together in joint efforts on any and all projects that may occur.
Well, because I'm part of the, in there, it says that they're to provide the names of the people that are going to be...
Yes, they'll provide the names of the people that we're going to work with, and that's still not been given to us.
But what I'm asking is, are the people from South Texas ISD going to be allowed into the facility without us being present?
Which facility? Ours? No, they normally would not come to our facility unless we're having meetings or they're going to be working on projects with our people. But they won't be there or have office unless they're designated an office space. That's detailed by Normak, her staff. Normally, they just don't come in. There are security purposes that disallow things like that there.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item eleven, consideration and action to award a term contract renewal for software maintenance and technical support for public safety information system for the Brownsville Police Department and the Brownsville Fire Department.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, we're asking you tonight to respectfully approve the term contract renewal for fiscal year 2013 for our spillman system, communication system in the police department and fire department, for a total of one hundred and twenty-two thousand nine seventy, paid for through Fund Three Ten Seven Fifty-Two for police and fire.
Would you approve?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Would you adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Adjourned.